Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order, starting with the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
I apologize. For heaven, I'll be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. I'll work as it is meant. He will sustain, he will deliver. He will trust his assistance. He will forgive those who trust his assistance. He is not going to take your seat. He will receive thy kicking, power, glory forever.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under the crown, indivisible, with which we shall govern.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Got a most, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. This time we have a certificate of appreciation to Mr. Otha Shockley for his years of service to Wycomico County. So, Mr. Shockley, can you stand? You can come forward if you want. If you want, go to the podium, just in case you or Mr. Matthews wants to say something.
Do you want to read it?
Do you want to read it? And this time we have Mr. Joe Holloway reading the certificate of appreciation to Mr. Shockley for his years of service.
Well, I guess it's okay to read this. I really don't want to see you leave. Things are keep looking so good around the government office building these days. Otha's been keeping things looking sharp for many years. It's from the Wycomico County Council, certificate of appreciation to Otha Shockley for your dedicated service to the citizens of Wycomico County, Maryland. While ever striving to exercise professionalism, good judgment, and fairness, we thank you for your ability to anticipate the needs of your community and for the grace you extend to council, staff, and citizens. And the good thing about Otha retiring is he lives in my neighborhood, and I know that he's going to keep Parsonsburg looking sharp now, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Shockley, would you like to say something?
No, I just...
Don't mean to put you on the spot, but we appreciate your service.
I'll just say one thing. I've known Otha for probably 35 years, and I told him when I took this position that he needs to give me a year before he retires. He knows where the bodies are buried. And graciously, he did give me three months, and we found a replacement for him, but there is no replacement. We find somebody to fill his position, and I'm just thankful to have a friend like Otha, and he's been a good employee for the county for a long time.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time we have a proclamation to recognize the month of July as National Parks and Recreation Month. We have Mr. Steve Miller in attendance. And since I'm on a couple of those commissions, I'll go ahead and read it. Proclamation for National Parks and Recs Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities and are vitally important to the establishing and maintaining the quality of life and ensuring health of all citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region; and whereas parks and recreation programs provide recreation services to improve the health of the citizens and build healthy communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for citizens to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month and recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby designates the month of July 2020 as National Parks and Recreation Month in Wycomico County, done this 21st day of July 2020, and signed by the entire Wycomico County Council. Mr. Miller?
And you're welcome to say something.
No, I just want to thank the council for their support over the many years for parks and recreation. It's a critical part of what we consider to be quality of life in Wycomico County. We inherited over the years a great park system, and we're excited about some of the additions to that park system that we're in the process of making for our citizens to enjoy for many more years. So, thank you for this proclamation. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, Ms. Harley?
Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have one change to today's agenda. The council office has received a request to remove legislative bill number 2020-06 from the agenda. So, the first item on the agenda this morning is discussion with Mr. Dave Ryan, Executive Director of the Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development on CARES Act grant funding.
Good morning, Mr. Ryan.
Good morning. I'm not sure of the rules. Do I keep...
You can take that off. It's really hard to hear you, and we're within six foot.
It says, please wear masks. I said, okay. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And glad to be here to update the council on the business assistance programs associated with the CARES Act funding. It's kind of a half moon. I mean, this is like dangerous with Ken, Mr. Cannon, and Mr. McCain. That won't go any further than...
We have your back.
Yeah, well, I play golf with these guys. I wouldn't stand in front of them if they were playing golf.
We're behind us.
So, appreciate being here. I'll update you on the CARES funding. When we started this, if I can, just a very, very brief background on how we kind of tackle this. It might help us through a little bit. We started the program, we wanted to do basically three things. One, we wanted to make it a fairly user-friendly process for businesses to apply for assistance. And we recognized at the end of March, middle of March, end of March of 2020, that the PPP program was coming out. The state of Maryland had their COVID relief grant coming out. The unemployment insurance claims were kind of overloaded. And we knew businesses throughout our county and our community were being disrupted in a large way, and we wanted to make that process as user-friendly as we possibly could. Two, we wanted to make the amount meaningful, as meaningful as we possibly could, and still reach those most impacted and reach those throughout a broad sector, a broad swath of our economy, covering all economic sectors as best we could. And third, we knew that we knew the need was great, and we wanted to deploy those funds quickly, and yet in an accountable way. And it was those three tenants, if you will, in which we started to, you know, really devise a plan to deploy that CARES funding throughout our community. And the first program we started with was the SWED Commerce Business Assistance Fund. That was a fund that kind of backfilled those businesses in Wycomico that applied for state funding but were not able to receive funding because the money simply ran out, and the money simply ran out in about two days. So, we had about 130 businesses that applied and did not receive funding just because the money was not there. And we felt that that was a good thing to do. We thought that was the right thing to do, and it also gave us a beta test for the broader-based program. So, we funded about 115 or so of those businesses, and we moved on July 1st or so with the SWED CV-19 Relief Grant Program, and tried to reach out to those businesses with 25 or less employees, less than $5 million in revenue, that were impacted by the COVID pandemic. And to date, inclusive of the first tranche of funds with the SWED Commerce Fund, we've received a little over 750 applications. We've funded a little over 520 applications. So, we have some that are in process, and some are still coming through the system. And so, we felt we would do about 800, and it looks like we're targeting this Friday to end the program and close the fund at 5:00 PM on Friday. So, I appreciate the opportunity to get in front of the council to spread the word. We're still, there's still some capacity, but I would suggest, please, apply now. Go to SWED.org, S-W-E-D.org. If you know of a business that's in need, please give them our email, our website, website first, then email, then telephone numbers, but SWED.org. We think we've, we have a good program. We think we've made the process user-friendly, and we invite those who have not yet applied to please, please consider applying. If you have any questions, just contact us. But we do plan to conclude this Friday at 5:00.
To conclude this Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
We think we will, we will run out of funds.
Okay.
So, we're reaching as many businesses as we possibly can.
Okay. Yeah, I've been watching the screen to see if they'd put SWED.org up there.
Please, put it up there, whoever's in charge of that thing.
They've got until Friday.
SWED.org. Friday at 5:00 is where we'll close out. We'll spend another couple of weeks kind of cleaning up a little bit, and there's some outlying issues. But I think we'll, I think we'll, we are targeting, we've extended it twice.
Yeah.
And I don't see that happening at this point unless the application's just all of a sudden stopped, so I...
So, you think you're going to expend all the funds available?
We think we'll spend the bulk of them. Yes, sir.
Just a quick...
Go ahead, Bill.
Just a quick comment. Dave, I want to thank you for your leadership on this. You were the point person and readily got out in front of this and, you know, met the needs. And like you said earlier, you made it user-friendly and as seamless as possible for the local businesses, and this really helped fill that gap of a lot of our small businesses in particular that missed out on that PPP money initially. So, you know, job well done, and we appreciate your leadership on this.
No, thank you. And it's a...
Contact me saying how easy the process was, which was, most people that I talked to were scared of it. They're afraid to get involved in it because, and I said, well, I'm hearing it's a pretty easy process, and...
Yeah. Yeah, we've heard that, and thank you for that. And thank you, Bill. If we've made it look easy, thank you, but...
It was a lot of work.
It's a, it's a, it's a lot of work, and we're, it's an honorable thing to do. And so, we hope we've made a difference in a lot of businesses. I think we have, from the comments we've received. But it's just not Dave either. Before this, months, we've kind of canvassed the business community, and from all sectors of the economy, they had input. Our guys at SWED were not afraid to reach out to anyone that we thought could add input and guidance to this process. And so, it's been a broadening and an educational and a meaningful experience for us at SWED and I think the county, hopefully.
Ms. Shockley?
Mr. Ryan, I was just wondering, I have several spots in my district that do not have internet and Wi-Fi, and I was wondering if there is a paper copy?
We can have, we're happy, we've had some paper copies. We've adjusted along the way, and we're happy to, I can email you a hard copy?
I think those mentioned probably were the ones who reached out to you to get the hard copy.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we've had a, had a, had a number. We've picked some up. We've went to the businesses and picked them up, and it's Zach and myself. So, we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
But Friday's the day.
I think it's most appropriate that SWED was the entity overseeing this application process, and by looking at 750-plus applications, I think SWED has done a good job. So, thank you and Zach and everyone else that was involved in this.
Yeah, we, like I say, it's been a, been a large community effort, I would say. And, you know, businesses ask, what can I do for you? And I say, find another business or two to apply. And a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of people have done just that. Walking up and down shopping centers and say, hey, I had a good experience. You can too, and this type of thing. And that really, you know, when we started the program, we had a lot of accountants and, you know, filing for clients, and then it starts permeating word of mouth throughout the community and really getting those smaller businesses, which has been rewarding. I think we've touched most parts of Wycomico, all the way around. We hope so.
Many more comments?
Well, if this helps keep doors open, we've done our job. Thank you very much. We've done that a couple of times.
Thank you very, thanks for having me. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Ms. Harley?
Okay, Nexus Resolution Number 52-2020, declaring that Apartmentsmart.com Inc. is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property, for property at 207 East Market Street. Council has seen the enterprise zone applications before. As a reminder, in order for a business to qualify for the enterprise zone benefits, it must meet one of the two specific statutory requirements, which are that the business must either make an investment in capital improvements of more than $50,000 or higher new employees since it's been located in the zone. Apartmentsmart.com is eligible for the enterprise zone benefits because of its hiring of two or more full-time employees.
Right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 52-2020?
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
The only discussion I...
What's that?
The only discussion I, I had was, and I don't know exactly to what degree this has an impact on this resolution as a whole, but I was surprised to see that in the lease agreement that was prepared, and from what I can understand, both of these companies are owned by the same individual, which isn't, I think, unusual in the business arena. But I found it unusual that in the lease that was prepared, as far as the documentation for the brief book, they're stating the fact that it's a $42,000 lease. It's requiring 12 installments of $4,500 each, and yet that doesn't come anywhere near $42,000. That's $54,000. So, I don't know. I'm only saying that, you know, when you look, when you review these and you try to see what the, you know, what's at play and for face value. I just thought a little bit disconcerting that the lease agreement of the owner, who's going to be benefiting from this with the company that he's leasing from, has a lease that is really, doesn't have much sense, doesn't make much sense. You know, you're looking at a security deposit of $1,000 on a lease where they're paying $4,500 a month rent, and you've got late fees of $50, whereas late fees are pretty much by law established by percentages, not by flat rates. So, no one is here from the city, which normally there, there's someone here, I guess, to maybe address any of these types of concerns. I would assume the fact that the agreement in the lease is part of it, of the application, they have to demonstrate that, that at least the lease would be somewhat legitimate. But I'm not going to vote against it. I just am bringing that out as a point of concern.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Any more comments?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Laura Soper from the city normally does attend the council meetings when we have the enterprise zone applications. She did have a schedule conflict, but I can follow up with her to get clarification on that lease agreement, if you would like.
That would be fine, Mrs. Harley. Again, I don't, I really doubt that the lease in itself is that critical as far as, you know, their qualifications for the enterprise zone, but that wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Ms. Harley?
Okay. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 53-2020. This is authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award in the amount of $180,000 from the Maryland State Department of Education, Division of Early Childhood. And we do have Ms. Michelle Bradley here, Director of the Local Management Board.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 53-2020?
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. I know we, we talked a little bit about this last time, but it seems like with this, with this particular grant, this would just be adding additional responsibility to your department.
For the monitoring and finance, the reimbursement, but these will all get RFP'd out. And we have a relationship with SU that is going to help with all the training aspects for the tri-county area, actually, because they already do that. So, most of these things were already in place. It was just to kind of get everybody together on the same page and put in the cognitive behavioral piece.
Okay. Well, thank you for putting it together. I just wanted to make sure we weren't inundating your department on things that our school system would be...
Yeah, they're actually going to do the work. We just hold them accountable, that's all.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any more comments? All those in favor, Resolution Number 53-2020, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
The next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 54-2020, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award in the total amount of $1,177,120,000 from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development through the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG-CV, for activities to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus crisis. And we have Lori Carter here, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, as well as Mr. Jesse Drewer from that department as well.
Right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 54-2020?
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I had a question for...
Mr. Cannon.
Director Carter.
Ms. Carter, can you come up, please?
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine, and you?
Good, good. The question I had was, it's a very generic resolution. I know there's more specifics as far as how this amount of money is going to be distributed in Wycomico County, so I was sort of looking for the particulars on that. And I guess more so as to why the Department of Planning and Zoning is overseeing the grants that are going to, I'm assuming, the Local Management Board and Habitat for Humanity. What your role is going to be and exactly what the purpose of it is going to be.
Well, as you know, typically Wycomico County or the Department of Planning and Zoning...
If you feel comfortable, you can remove it. If you feel comfortable, yeah.
Wycomico County typically, under the CDBG, is done by the Wycomico County Planning Office.
Okay.
So, we're just going to be pretty much making sure that all of the funding is actually expended the way that it should. So, we're just providing that type of, you know, well, we've done sub recipients for almost everyone that's always have pretty much applied.
Okay.
So, that's what we've always have done.
Do you, have you been privileged as of yet to understand or to recognize exactly what the funding is going to be distributed, for what purposes?
Yes. I believe in your last resolution, $500,000 is going to be for assisting persons who have been, have had some pretty much hardship as it relates to paying their actual rent.
Right.
So, that's what that money will be pretty much expended for. So, it's going to be $500,000 for Habitat, $500,000 for the Local Management Board. And then there's $177,000 plus for MAC.
Right. Okay.
So, those are what those funds will be expended for.
Thank you.
And we would hope to get this started by August 3rd. Any more comments?
I would abstain.
You'll what?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay. Ms. Shockley?
I'm also going to abstain. I'm the president for Habitat for Humanity.
Okay. Any more comments? All in favor, Resolution Number 54-2020, say aye.
Aye.
Got five ayes. Oh, and a nays. Got five ahs and two abstentions. The resolution passes. Ms. Harley?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Nexus Resolution Number 55-2020, confirming the appointment of Anthony M. Rudy as General Manager for the Salisbury-Wycomico Regional Airport.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 55-2020?
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We have Mr. Rudy in front of us, and...
Tony's doing a great job. He's, I've been fortunate enough to sit in on airport commission meetings. They're very thorough, and he's doing an excellent job as far as taking up where Ms. Veatch had left off. And even when Ms. Veatch was here, he was an integral part of maintaining the, you know, the structures in place, and I think has taken the ball and has just rolled with it very well. So, I appreciate all, all the work you've done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Holloway?
No, I'm on.
Okay, thought you had a comment. Any more discussion? All right. All in favor, Resolution Number 55-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Mr. Airport Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Any comment?
No, I just, I really appreciate the opportunity and the confidence that the county executive, county administrator, county council have with me. And this has been just an ongoing part of my career, and it's an interesting time for the airport, especially with the coronavirus situation. But it's also an exciting time for the airport, and we're looking to build on a lot of the initiatives that Don Veatch started a few years ago, and I think we'll be in a, in a better place as time goes on.
All right. Well, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 56-2020, authorizing the county executive to acquire Lot 1 on the west side of Second Street, Delmar, Maryland, being shown on tax map 20, grid four, parcel 22, for in addition to the Delmar Athletic Complex, and to accept the donation of $3,000 from the Delmar-Vashorebirds Fly Together Fund at the Community Foundation. And council did have two work sessions on this request, which were held on June 16th and July 7th. And we have Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
All right. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 56-2020?
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Doc, can I?
Yes.
So, we just received an email as this, after this meeting started, that Mr. Marshall contacted the law office and has stated that he would accept the purchase price of $35,000 without the Shorebirds' money. The one thing noted, and I'll have to do further research on this, is that he's requested that we would honor Mr. McCain, Sr., for his past contributions to the property in the Delmar Little League, that we would put a recognition on the, on the site, but he has indicated that he would accept the 35. So, before you voted, I just wanted to make you aware of a late development here, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
Need a motion to amend the resolution to strike the reference to the Shorebirds' contribution.
Got a motion to strike the reference for Delmar-Vashorebirds. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Mr. Hastings. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of...
Discussion would say I'd like to thank Mr. Marshall for his generous offer to step back to the 35. I think that's great. I appreciate the Shorebirds making, making that effort. Chris Bitters has always been an important part, an integral part of this community. We know that, and for them to step forward, I think that was very admirable. I think it's equally admirable for, for Mr. Marshall to step back also and accept the 35. So, I'd like to thank them both for that. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Excellent points, Mr. Cannon. And I did want to point out, too, that Mr. Bitters and the Shorebirds, they're very active in the local Little League community. If you go to any of the ballgames, you might see their sign, their banner up on some of the fences there. So, they are very active in Little League, and they are to be commended for that as well. Ms. Holloway?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Marshall also. The county's always had a practice of paying, you know, appraised value and understand that it was, you know, requested over appraised value. So, the county did go to the highest appraisal, and understand that there was some conversations about what he would take, and I'm glad he did step back. And, you know, there's a will, there's a way to get things done, and I think we worked through this very well. Thank you.
Thank Mr. Marshall when you're saying funny.
Yes, Mr. Marshall should be commended. Thank you. Any more discussion? All right. Are we voting on the amendment right now? Okay, right now, all in favor of the amendment striking the Shorebirds' contribution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor of Resolution Number 56-2020 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Ms. Hurley?
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Okay. This time we have Mr. Bob Taylor, counsel attorney, to introduce legislative bill twenty dash twenty, twenty twenty dash oh five, an act to amend chapter twenty-nine of all Wycomico County Code, Article Two, titled Grant Funds, Section twenty-nine dash eighteen through twenty-nine dash twenty-one, and to add sections twenty-nine dash twenty-two and twenty-nine dash twenty-three and twenty-nine dash twenty-four to provide greater transparency and full accountability of the county's allocation of grant funds. Need a motion to introduce legislative bill number twenty twenty dash oh five.
So moved.
Got a motion, need a second. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Mr. Hastings. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Well, I just, I know that everybody happy with what's been worked through. I know Bill and Mr. Taylor, did you discuss this and get squared away?
No, we haven't talked since the last meeting. But, I mean, I'm fine with, you know, getting introduced. You know, we might still have some questions afterwards, like any, like any bill. But, you know, Mr. Taylor's inserted the, some language from the last meeting. So, you know, now I was able to get the bulk of my questions addressed at the last meeting.
From what I read, I'm okay.
All right. Any more discussion?
Just a couple of points, Mr. Dodd.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Just in the briefing book, just oversight, it indicates introduce July seven, twenty-twenty. That should be twenty-one today, of course.
For today's date.
Yeah, so that'd just be a minor. I mean, that's not a substantive, just a typo-type thing. And if you want me to, I can run through and just quickly show how I've changed this from the version that was before council at the last meeting.
I think everyone has had time to see this. Anyone want to hear Mr. Taylor go through it?
Actually, Ms. Hurley, or did you get the one, she sent us a version with the highlighted changes?
Yeah, within yellow?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. If you all have that, I won't go through it. I mean, it's probably a total of twenty-five words.
Okay.
Thirty, maybe.
Do we need to vote on the correction of the date?
No, it would be considered a typo.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, introducing legislative bill number twenty twenty dash oh five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Bill introducing unanimously. Now, Ms. Hurley, we need a date.
Yes, we can schedule the public hearing for that bill on August the eighteenth at ten a.m.
August eighteenth at ten a.m. Okay. Thank you. And the operating capital budget of the Civic Center has been pulled. Okay, this time we have public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. And if you have any presented material, you may submit them to the council members. And please include ten copies. If you have any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, with none, moving on to council comments. Mr. Cannon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say, you know, our sympathy rests with the family of Don Veach Senior. His unfortunate demise. He was a leader in Hebron. I think everybody knows that. Anybody that's even in Wycomico County, I know that when I first started out in this campaigning arena, you didn't have to go to Hebron to know that you needed to be in Hebron because you needed to talk to the Veach family and know exactly what the lay of the land. And these are, you know, the family has been a leader, you know, example of such strong leadership within that community and with Wycomico County. So, my thoughts and prayers go out to his family and I hope they continue the good work that, and the legacy that he left for his family and for the county and for the town of Hebron.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Any more council comments?
Just a quick comment of-
Mr. McCain.
I wasn't able to make this comment during the Delmar purchase of the lot, but I did want to thank Mr. Marshall for his efforts on this and getting this done. And just very much appreciated. And that was my hometown. That's where I grew up. And my father was very instrumental in that complex and was the former mayor of Delmar and president of Lions Club, president of the Lodge, a lot of other things he did in Delmar during his lifetime. So, I just appreciate very, very much Mr. Marshall's comments and actions surrounding the park. And it'll be a great asset for the Little League there and its future in Delmar.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Any more comments? Mr. Hastings?
I did get an email this morning saying that Hawkeye MedTech, basically one of a larger state organizations, did just fund Wycomico County and Wycomico and Somerset County for twenty-five telemedicine stations and to distribute more than two thousand telemedicine tablets. So, it was asked that we could then share the, they are looking for, they got the amount of, they got all the equipment. Now, they just need is firehouses or other kind of nursing homes or other kind of spaces to people host that. So, if anybody in Wycomico County, you know, was willing to host any of these telemedicine stations during the COVID era, during this time, specifically it's because of our poverty and our other issues, that's how we were awarded this. So, it's outside of the purview of the local government. But this is something that we're basically looking to, they're looking to try to support rural Maryland, and this is why we were targeted. So, if anybody knows of any places that they could host that.
Good information there, Councilman Hazen. Any more council comments? Ms. Ackley? Ms. Holloway?
I would say, I knew Don, Don Veach, back in the early eighties when we both worked together at Olive and Chevalier. And Don was, of course, involved in the fire department back then. One thing I remember about Don, you always knew he was in the room by his laugh. And that's one recollection that I really remember about Don even that long ago when we would have sales meetings or whatever. And then when I got elected to the county council, I got reacquainted with Don, you know, through the fire department and through being on the council. So, sad to see what happened. You know, Don was a good fellow. So, that's all.
Yes. Being in the fire service, I knew Mr. Veach and the family for over twenty-five years. And a good family. They've contributed a lot of time to the citizens and visitors of Wycomico County. So, it's good that we're remembering Mr. Veach and the family. It's a good family, and we appreciate everything that they've done. Again, Mr. Marshall and Mr. Bitters and the Delmar-Vashorebirds, we commend them. They're very active in the community as well and very appreciative. And this morning, we gave a certificate of appreciation to an individual, an employee. But I do want to point out that this council really does appreciate all county employees. So, thank you for your service, especially during these trying times. And I know it's hot outside, so everyone be safe. And the county has opened a colon center up at the Civic Center, the Midway Room. And I believe it's open today from eleven until eight, and tomorrow as well. They may extend it, but these two dates, they are open. In Parks and Recs, we have the USSSA Softball World Series going on. If you get the time, go out to Henry Parker or some of the other ballfields and watch some very talented girls, some very good ballplayers out there. So, stay safe, everyone. So, thank you. Do you have a comment? Ms. Ackley?
Yes, I just wanted to mention with the cooling stations that Shore Transit is providing transportation from the city and other areas of the county to the Civic Center.
Shore Transit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Need a motion to adjourn from legislative session and a second?
So moved.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Got time to go into the first work session. Have an amendment to the Wycomico County Solid Waste Management Plan to add an office building and recycling plan. Mr. Whitelock? You can come forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mark Whitelock, Deputy Director of Public Works. So, we have bill three seventy as the office building recycling plan. It took effect October first, two thousand nineteen. It needed to be amended into the ten-year management plan by July first, two thousand twenty. It involves buildings over a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And even if the same person owns two facilities, those combined facility, square foot, would make them eligible that they would be covered under this as well. Off the top, we have Purdue, SU, Warwick, the G O B, PRMC, and most likely the Board of Ed.
Okay. And what was that you said had to be done by July first?
The acceptance into the ten-year waste management.
It's the twenty-first now.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Hurley, this requires a public hearing?
It does, and it has to be advertised two times, I believe, for two consecutive weeks. So, we can have that public hearing on August the eighteenth at ten a.m.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'll reach out to M D E. I'm sure they'll be fine.
Okay. Mr. Holloway, you have a comment?
Mark, Mr. Whitelock, could you kind of go through, I mean, I've read all this, for the public, basically what this involves and why we're having to do this bill?
Basically, what the state is saying, that anyone who has office space that covers more or up to, starting at a hundred and fifty thousand square feet or higher-
You're saying anyone? You're talking about any county?
Any business, any building, any office building, whether it be government or private industry, that they enact a recycling plan to, which we do here in the G O B, and paper, and cardboard, and cans, and those types of things. And then, just basically, we track it. We have to administer it. The county does. It's not something the state's going to do, which is normally, that's what they do.
To most of these businesses that you mentioned a few minutes ago, they probably already have those in place anyway, don't they?
Probably, yes.
I know Purdue, I think Purdue does, yes. Talked to them about it a few minutes ago.
I know, you know, SU is big on recycling. I'm sure Warwick is, too. We have recycling here at the G O B. So, yeah, I think everybody's probably either complying already or it wouldn't take much.
Okay. So, it's not going to cause you to have to increase employees or build any spaces or-
No.
Basically, it's paper thin?
It's paper thin, yeah.
All right.
Mr. Hastings?
As part of this recycling plan, could you theoretically be, if you took all the recycling out of this building and went straight into the dump without recycling, would that be meeting the intent of this?
If we, say that again?
If all of these businesses and, say, even the G O B, if we took all of the recycling and took the materials and put them straight in the dump, would that still be meeting the intent of this?
Under normal circumstances, no.
And of course, I think you know why I'm bringing that up, obviously.
Yes, I do.
And is there a way that we can get around, you know, to the public's clear? We don't have, we're not currently recycling.
Well, to clarify, we have moved back into some recycling at a lower level to what we can, what our staffing can handle. We're doing cardboard, newspaper, tin cans, and aluminum cans currently.
And I guess on another side note, maybe that's a different question for a different time, but it would be nice to better evaluate, how can we actually pull off recycling without taking advantage of free labor?
Approximately ten employees.
Because it, you know, I guess at this point in time, it's one thing for health.
Yes.
But it is for, you know, going forward, it'd be better to have, it'd be better if we, as a county, could do more-
To be more self-sustaining, yes. Well, I'd never seen a pandemic before, so-
So, we don't see one, none yet.
So, we, you know, we went with what we had in front of us. From a dollar, you know, a dollar point, you know, it's a lot cheaper to have inmate labor come in and do the work, and they get out, so they're doing the things that they need to do, and we're able to do the things that we need to do. Unfortunately, in a pandemic, they restrict those inmates from coming out.
Is the county paying for the inmate labor?
Yes. Well-
A small stipend or something?
Yeah, it's like a dollar an hour, a dollar a day, something. It's not much. I mean, if you compare that to employee salary benefits and, you know, everything else that goes along with it, it's small.
If we had to hire ten employees, would the recycling pay for it?
No.
No?
No.
Not enough money off of aluminum cans and-
Barely. It struggles to break even now.
Okay. So, to clear the record, as I'm OCD about these plastic bottles and jars, you're not doing plastic or glass at this time?
No, not right now. Now, glass was something that we struggled with anyway. There's no market for glass. We've found other ways to get around it. Every once in a while, you get somebody who comes in, they want to make what they call glass fault, so they'll swap aggregate for glass chips in their blacktop, so it's particles. You'll see it in the city when you go out there.
But they discontinued that?
We still do it whenever we can. It's just trying to be in benefit. We don't throw it in the landfill, no.
Yeah.
I mean, we still have found ways of using it that benefit. So, unfortunately, it's not something that we can, unless it goes out on a truck for glass fault, it's not something we can count on our recycling percentages for the year. But it's still not ending up in the landfill either. So, that works out. Like I say, plastics right now are the only thing that we're not actively recycling. They, they're just very labor-intensive, and the labor's the one thing that we don't have. These other things are things that we can pick through fairly minorly and work them through the system and get them in. But we're still not to a point where we could take the pre-COVID volume of material that we were taking, if that makes sense. So, we're taking care of the county need. I did reach out to the city the other day, and they said for what we're doing right now is probably wouldn't benefit them cost-wise to go back into it yet. But just as soon as we can pick it up and go further, then we'll go.
Okay. Did you have another question, Mr. Hastings?
Also, to be clear, most of the plastic, that's even including the two pieces of plastic that are sitting on the desk in front of you, would not be recyclable in the first place.
Yes, they are.
No, they're not.
That water bottle?
No, the two ones right in front of you.
Oh, he's here.
Yeah. Yeah, they're probably number six or seven or whatever.
HDP, I do believe.
And which we couldn't take because they're not narrow neck or one or two. So, majority of the plastic that we have, making the point, goes right in the dumpster anyhow.
They go with the narrow necks, and, but one of the things and the reason that we use some of the wording that we did is because actually a oil jug that you get a quart of oil in, it is recyclable. The only problem is, is the oil that was in the jug has now contaminated the plastic stream. So, how we word things and how we do things are to disallow these types of items from coming in because there's nothing we can do with them anyway. I mean, yes, the plastic's recyclable, but it's contaminated plastic, so we can't move forward with that.
And any more questions? Ms. Ackley? Well, I thought you were saying, okay. When do you think you'll be up to full force to go ahead and complete the plastics and glass recycling?
That would be a question probably for the governor of Maryland.
You don't have an idea?
We don't have any idea.
I thought I would ask that. And what percentage of recycling are we required to do?
Twenty-one percent.
Twenty-one percent?
Twenty-one percent by how they configure it is, population. So, that's twenty-one percent.
What are we averaging? Do you know?
We're generally above the twenty-one percent. We're running the twenties. We've had years where we were much higher than twenty. But we, this year, it'll probably be a struggle to make that. To say that we won't be in the boat by ourselves. There will be many other counties who were caught in the same circumstance that are doing exactly the same things that we're doing right now.
Is that a requirement?
There's a requirement, yeah.
There is, or is not?
There is.
There is.
Yes.
All right. Any more comments? Ms. Hurley, we have anything else on that?
I do not. We can have the public hearing in August.
August eighteenth. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitelock. All right. Next, to discuss a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Department of General Services for funding to connect new Delmarva power equipment to the government office building. Mr. Posoda?
Good morning.
Good morning. If you would, state your names for the record.
John Posoda, Director of Administration for Wycomico County.
Pete Matthews, General Services Supervisor.
Yeah, thank you. Who wants to start it? You can take your mask off.
Mr. Posoda will.
Mr. Posoda will.
This is a, appears to be pretty straight-up request for $54,340 to be transferred from contingency to the Government Office Building line item regarding a ongoing project that Mr. Matthews can speak with specificity towards. It's a problem that's been, that has existed for some time and for the safety and welfare of all employees and visitors, et cetera, that we need to finally address. Mr. Matthews?
I'm assuming you have information in your books, but really what this comes down to, in 1975, technology, when this building was built, Delmarva Power put their main transformers in a segregated room in the basement that only they have access to. Several years ago, there was an existing exhaust fan in that room that maintained a reasonable temperature. Not air conditioning, but just kept outside air coming to it to keep the equipment somewhat cool. That fan failed, from what I'm being told, about five years ago. A new fan was installed on this. The old fan is in the room with the equipment. A contractor installed a new fan on the exterior of the building so we wouldn't have to get in the room because we don't have access. Well, it was installed and now, five years later, it has still never been connected because nobody was able to get DPNL here to get us in the room. Finally, had a connection, got DPNL here. The first thing the serviceman says is, we're not going in this room. 1,600 amps of electricity flow through that room and it's, everything's open. There's no protection, there's no safety measures. It's just three big transformers. And when DPNL goes in there, they suit up, they put on their sleeves, they go in there as if everything's hot, which it is.
Right.
We can't even work, we can't even get to the control wiring for this fan in a safe manner. We'd have to shut the power off at the street to be able to hook the fan up. So DPNL had their engineers come out and basically what it comes down to is, that's yesterday's technology. They want to upgrade the transformers out here by the rear exit. It's where they locate them. And we'd also be able to incorporate a main switch coming into the building that if we had a catastrophic event and the fire company or somebody else needed to shut the power down, we'd be able to do it. Right now, if we have an issue, we would have to wait for Delmarva Power to get here to shut the power off. So really, this is a life safety concern. It's a rare occasion that one of those transformers does malfunction and when it does, it's not a pretty sight. So it's a safety issue and an equipment upgrade as well.
Yeah. My experience shows that when they do fail, it's usually during a big storm. And you mentioned the fire department. Do the local fire departments know about the safety hazard and the location and what to do? Have they done training on this?
I doubt it.
Is there any way we can get them involved? Because I'd hate to see someone get hurt.
I guess I don't understand your question.
Well, if the fire departments locally aren't aware of the hazard in this building, it'd be nice to make them aware of it.
Agreed.
And possibly do some training. Trying to replace it.
We're trying to eliminate the hazard. That's what this is all about, is getting these transformers out of the basement into the exterior of the building and providing a switch.
Right. I get that.
On the secondary side.
But in the meantime, if there's an emergency.
Sure.
You said that it sounds like they aren't aware of the hazards.
I would venture to guess they're not. I can't say for sure that they don't know, but I would say they probably don't.
Okay, it'd be nice if we could get them involved.
I can do that.
Do we have any more comments?
Yeah, I guess.
Mr. Holloway?
You know, this is an afterthought because you're going to change it now, but I would thought that putting them in the basement would probably have been the worst place in the world to put them in case of flooding because we know where the area we're in and, you know, I mean, there used to be a pond here close by and so. But anyway, I'm glad to see it's getting changed and.
Like the health department.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, looks like it could have been a real bad safety issue.
It's flooding.
Exactly. There are floor drains in that area. We had a downpour two weeks ago. We had water coming up from the floor drains at the courthouse.
Right, right.
And so it's one of those situations.
Going the other way.
It's, could be just a matter of time.
Right, right. Is that going to probably cover what this transfer is? Is that going to take care of all the costs of taking care of it?
I've added a 10% contingency to the total amount that we got from the contractor and there is no cost to us from Delmarva Power.
Right, okay.
Mr. Dodd, I have a couple, just a question.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Does this involve this year's budget or last year's budget? The supplemental appropriation? It's not indicated in the memo.
Mr. Posoda?
Right, that would be this year's memo or this year's budget.
Yeah, good, yeah, that's good. I won't get into the reason why, but it's good.
And it is a shared cost and Salisbury has appropriated 55,000 for that shared cost.
Yeah, the other thing is just a comment and it has to do mostly with the resolution and I understand what they're doing. But I think in terms of our budget amendments, they should be written in terms of the budget language and not just the munis language for a couple of reasons. So we know where it is in the budget that we're changing. It's not hard to do and this is a pretty simple case, but in things like the resolution that was knocked off the agenda today, it can make a real difference. It was almost impossible to interpret that. What I'll do, it'll only take about five or 10 minutes. I'll just give you the format of how I think it should be in the resolution and it's simple to do and send it over through Laura. I would like to get the amount that is in the contingency. It's been, in other words, the total sum from which the amount of 54,340 is being taken. So we know what is remaining in that contingency account after that transfer. But Laura can get that, give it to me and just stick it in.
Okay. Ms. Posoda, Charter Section 709 requires that the contingency requires certification from a finance director. As you know, we don't officially have a finance director. How do we work around this?
That particular question, I think it'd be inappropriate for me to respond. I'm still trying to learn which weighs up on the budget.
All right, this is just a work session.
Understood.
We'll find a way to work around it, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
Any more comments, any discussion? Ms. Hurley, do you have anything on this?
I don't. Pete, is the equipment that, is it new equipment that's actually going to be located outside?
Yes.
Of the Government Office Building?
Yes.
And then you mentioned it, like if we were to have a hurricane or, you know, some, you know, event, how is that equipment protected?
It's in a weather-tight case.
A weather-tight case?
Yeah, it's just like you see on the side of the road. It's in a weather-tight cabinet. Everything's made for outdoors.
Oh, interesting, okay.
All right. This is, where will this be located?
If you're coming in the back door, if you look over to your left, there's a stairwell that goes down to the basement. It will be right in that area in front of the stairwell, whether it's disturbed or than three spragging bushes there right now. So that's where it'll be, it'll be, you know, easy. That's where the power comes in. If you, when you leave today, if you look on the sidewalk, you'll see a series of three red dots coming from the street.
Locator dots, yeah.
And by putting it there, they can dig up enough of their primary feed to come back into the new transformer without burying new cable.
I know there was some tanks buried there.
And that's, yes, we have, we have plans to remove that tank, but I have held off on that pending this project because we're going to be tearing sidewalk up and no need to throw good money after bad.
Right, okay. I'll remember the tank situation.
Yeah.
You know, and kind of related to this, in a sort of a way, Mako's doing a summer series right now every week and a few weeks ago, their series was on climate change. But they had speakers from several of the counties here in Maryland and several of our counties have climate resiliency plans. And what these plans are, it has to do with all their capital projects, but they're identifying, you know, this would be a perfect example, like Joe said, like 1975. Of course, they stuck this in the basement, but you never would have done that today.
Right.
And, but having these climate resiliency plans, what they do is, you know, this is all looked at, any capital project, because these are things that are going to last you for 40, 50, 60 years. They're making sure that they're placed in locations that take into account water levels and sea level rise and, you know, voiding, putting things like in basements and so forth. But what was really unique about that was each one of the, a couple of accounting executives were on there, a couple of planning folks, but they said when they went to New York for their bond money, the bond folks, S&amp;P and the others, they wanted to talk about one thing, their climate resiliency plan. They didn't ask them about their staff or education budget or school. They wanted to know about the plan, that's all they wanted to hear about. And each one of them said they got lower rates on their bonds because of these plans. And so it's probably something for us to put on our target, you know, in the future here, to, you know, to be working towards something like that because Mako's promoting this and numerous counties already have them. So it's not something we have to invent, you know, it's something we can mimic.
And I think, I think in an indirect way, we probably are headed that way now.
Well, most are.
Projects because when we have an engineer and architect involved, all the leading aspects get worked into the project. Some of them are good, some of them are not so good. But it is what it is in today's world as far as energy conservation and wise use. So I think, you know, we, I can take a look at what you're talking about.
In fact, Anna Rundell's, Anna Rundell's Planning Director was one of the speakers and he gave an example of they were going to rebuild a library in the southern part of the county and, but because of their resiliency plan, they ended up changing the location. Even though this location had been on the books for several years to build this new library, but the, where it was being built, when they looked at the sea level rise predictions for the next 30 years, they would have put it basically below sea level in 30 years. But that wouldn't have happened, it wasn't for their plan and forcing them to look forward like that and ended up changing their location. So, yeah, so I think it's something for us to.
Back to you, Councilman Holloway. The engineer from Delmarva Power remarked on how many setups like this were actually in Ocean City.
Yeah, couldn't make a lot of sense, though.
Yeah, but in 1975, you know, that's what they did, so.
That was a long time ago, believe it or not. It was probably a good idea then.
If you walk into some of them rooms, you might start tingling.
I walked into the doorway to take pictures and they wouldn't let me go any further. It's that significant in there.
Wow. So if that equipment's removed, are there any plans for that space?
It's really not very big. It's very mundane. It's just, you know, it's just a concrete room.
Put Pete's desk in there.
Let's not say we did.
All right, we don't need Pete down there. All right, any more comments? Thank you, Mr. Matthews, good job on that. Don't go anywhere, Mr. Posoda.
I'm not.
Next, proposed amendment to the fiscal years 2021-2025 Capital Improvement Program and the fiscal year 21 capital budget to increase grant funding for the design, construction and construction of the airport water main extension. Mr. Posoda, the Director of Administration is with us.
Happy to field any questions the council may have. I believe it's a project that's been going on since 2017. So for me, it's been going on for two and a half weeks, so I can try and help you answer any questions.
We're working with you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think, I think there is a huge concern as to how this all has developed over the last years. I understand it and I know that Mr. Taylor has sent numerous documents in reference to this. And it seems somewhat disconcerting that we're in the middle of a project, actually a project that should have started some time ago. I think the original contracts were signed in December 2019. So we're here seven months later and yet, as I understand it, through Mr. Taylor's work, this has turned out to be somewhat of a reimbursable loan or grant. And we have not established through our budget process the funding necessarily necessary to even begin the project. Am I correct on that?
More or less. Let me help Mr. Posoda some because I know he's only been here a couple of weeks. And I mean, to kind of summarize what I'm going to say by saying I think it would be a good idea for maybe he, Laura and me to sit down and work things out. I think we can quickly come to a resolution to get things moving. There are a lot of moving parts here and unanswered questions. And like you say, one of them has to do with the fact that we've never really accepted the grant or the loan that the Board of Public Works authorized back in the fall of last year.
I believe the grant's been accepted, if I'm.
So that's sort of one aspect of it.
But didn't we just accept the grant a few meetings ago?
Oh, we just, we accepted the airport grant, I believe, but not the grant for this. And that's only part of it. The other part of it is the fact that even that grant money that was in the budget for a couple of years ago is actually not the amount of the grants that are being offered now by the state. So there's a difference there. Thirdly, there's a question of how much has ever been appropriated for this project period. And I would point out that three years ago, I think it was, there was a $350,000 appropriation that was approved in the budget that was to have come from the Airport Enterprise Fund, Reserve Fund. I don't know whether that money has ever actually been transferred or if it has been transferred, whether it's been spent. And that dovetails back into the Board of Public Works approval, which has a local share requirement of $286,450.
Right.
And whether that money has been spent or is available to be spent, we just don't simply know. So as I say, there are a lot of unanswered questions here about this. And another one, while I'm on that topic, is the fact that the total grant approval by the state is for 4.4 million, which is about 700 and some thousand dollars more than what the contract by the Bramble firm is to do the work. Now, I don't know why there's that difference. It could very well be because there are other contract items, such as the engineering services, that would probably be under a separate contract. There may very well be a contingency. But we don't have any of that information. Last week, we asked Mr. Wilbur to send over the grant and loan documentation and what we got was a cost-sharing agreement by which the county executive agreed that the grant funding for this from the state would be a maximum of $1.5 million, which is what the board approved. So there's no, there's no issue there. But that's all it does, it's just simply a cost-sharing agreement. It doesn't give us the terms of the grant, it doesn't give us the terms of the loan. And regarding the loan, it keeps, it's like peeling back the layers of an onion here. The loan, we understand now, is to be what's called a reimbursement basis loan, meaning that to get the money from the loan, the county has to pay the costs first, meaning from other money, because you don't get the loan money until you've paid the costs. So there's a question of how much extra appropriation from the general fund, if any, is required to put that all together. So what we've got is a ball of wax with a lot of moving parts inside it that I think it would be very helpful for just perhaps Laura, Mr. Posoda and me to just sit down, go through everything, get the documentation in front of us, read it and try to work out something that cures, covers all the bases, so to speak. And I, you know, I'm sorry to cut into Mr. Posoda's time, but I think that would be the quick and simple and best way to resolve this whole matter.
Ms. Hurley, this requires a public hearing date as well. So with Mr. Taylor requesting these documents and a meeting with you and Mr. Posoda, does that give you enough time?
It does. I mean, this, the requirement for this public hearing is just one advertisement. So that certainly gives us enough time.
So we're not going to need a copy of all these contract agreements prior to then?
The county should have them. It's a matter of just getting them from the. The county should have them. It's a matter of just getting them from the proper person.
Yeah, I think just to kind of elaborate a little, little bit on what you just asked.
Yes, sir.
I mean, part, part of the reason to get them is because we, we're entitled to one point five million in grant funds. And there's a question, at least in my mind, as to whether we can get that money upfront in terms of the construction process to pay the, the first several months or four, five months, let's say, of contractors' draws. And then that would be money we've paid for costs, which would open us up, hopefully, to get money from the loan to reimburse ourselves for the costs we paid with the grant money. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of kind of timing, uh, and administrative aspects of this that we'd like to get the documents for. We may have to call and ask somebody at the state. Can we do that? Because if we can, it might eliminate, it would certainly reduce, the need to put in extra general funds and then reimburse the general funds from that loan I mentioned, that reimbursement loan. It might knock it down to where we don't have to do any. But we don't know until we see the documents.
Right. That, we have to vote on this for its approval, and I can't see the council voting blindly. So it'd be nice to get this information, these contracts.
If I can, uh, address Mr. Cannon's concern.
Absolutely.
Yes, the, the, the project has, uh, I think it started in December of twenty seventeen. As it's progressed through, um, uh, going, going through, through the hurdles, if you will, that the, the, uh, largest, uh, time-consuming setback, I believe, was the, uh, agreement between Salisbury and County on the, on the Water Service Agreement. Um, um, to, to address Mr. Taylor's, uh, some of his concerns, it, once he, uh, gets to Laura delineated specifics, uh, of what exactly he's requesting, um, a lot of those concerns, uh, should be answered. Um, we, in other words, we already had the answers for, but the, the forum, I guess, would be, once he, uh, presents it, so that we can lay it out for the entire council in, in short, uh, clear, concise answers to address all your concerns. Uh, yes, it has been a, a project that has, uh, continued to, to ground on. Um, typically, MDE says at some point, uh, once you accept the grant or once the loan has been, uh, offered, you have a certain amount of time to begin construction. I believe at that time, it was uh, twen- December of twenty nineteen, uh, to, to, uh, begin construction. Uh, that could be, it, it's around that time. As long as MDE sees that you're progressing towards an end goal, um, that, that, the time, the time to begin construction, uh, they will work with us on. Uh, we got, we had the one point five million dollar grant. We, we now, from what I understand, the loan, the Maryland Water Quality, uh, loan went from one point nine to two point nine. I believe that has to do with the, uh, when, when the bids were, uh, that came in, uh, higher than originally budgeted. Uh, the two eighty-five, uh, referenced as, as to whether or not that can be, uh, covered with the grant or loan, that is for engineering, um, uh, services from GMB, uh, that I believe the council, uh, approved. That is not, that, that's the local cost share. Um, it's a long-winded answer to say we are working towards the goal of getting the water out to the airport from, from the college. Um, and as long as we continue to make strides and do the legal hurdles that we need to comply with, uh, as advised by bound, uh, Bond Council, um, that Bond Council says that we are continuing to achieve, uh, we're on the, the right path to, to get that accomplished.
So I'm going to, I'm going to assume that the June thirtieth memo that the council received, that to date hasn't been shared with Mr. Posoda, is that correct?
Um, I'm not aware, one way or the other, but we can certainly share it with him.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, because he's, he's, he's asking for specifics, and I thought that, that, that was extremely specific, Mr. Taylor. So I, 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 um, I like what, uh, Mr. Posoda is suggesting, that, uh, if we can get all the, the, the minds together to sort through this, I, hopefully, when it comes back here, it shouldn't be just a matter of, uh, you know, process.
That's the way I see it. I mean, I think we can wrap this up, hopefully, pretty quickly.
Okay, good.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, I, I think the council is eager to work with you and get through this. Um, so we'll put it on the agenda, uh, for the fourth next meeting.
And I, I appreciate the, uh, the partnership. It's, it's a great project. Uh, I'm familiar with the, the way, uh, MDE works and, and Lindsey Rader. Uh, I, I think we can, we can continue to move this forward, uh, perhaps with an increased speed.
Any more comments? Thank you, Mr. Posoda. Um, next, uh, we have legislative bill twenty twenty dash oh four for fiscal, uh, year twenty-one, the budget bill exhibit. Um, we invited Mr. Posoda and Mr. Culver to the, um, work session to discuss the, uh, letter that was submitted.
And again, uh, at this time, it'd be inappropriate for me to comment on, on
Any discussion on this?
I think there's a lot of discussion.
Yes.
There's a lot of discussion. I, for one, didn't understand one paragraph of the response we got back from the Executive's Office. Not, not a sentence. Um, how that related to what the council's concerns were, I couldn't give you an answer. So somehow or other, we're going to have to try to meet halfway through this, uh, as far as some, some measure by which to sort through it all. Um, it appears as if there's a lot of loose ends from, um, finalizing last year's budget. Um, again, uh, Mr. Taylor's gone to great length to try to, um, sort through it. I'm not saying that everything Mr. Taylor has suggested is right.
Right.
At all. Um, but I think it gives us some guideline by which we need to start putting this, the past work back together so that we have, um, some semblance of where the heck we're going.
Yeah, I just would add to that. And I think Mr. Posoda, as well as council, are both aware of this now. The Board of Ed has gotten, uh, an attorney involved in this. He initially contacted me, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, kind of, uh, leaning on me as, can't council get this money to us? And, uh, make, long story short, I told him that, uh, council has done everything it can do, uh, from its budgetary authority and legislative authority, uh, by essentially restoring the funding for the, the three school projects that would include, of course, Mardella. Um, and, um, but we can't cut the checks. That's not part of our council's authority under, as a legislative body. That's purely executive, and you have to get that from the exec. Uh, and I've pointed out both to him and to, um, Dr. Hanlon, that the exec doesn't want to pay the money. Now, this is, I'm speaking now primarily at the time of Mardella. Uh, it now appears that the county executive doesn't want to do any of the other funding, uh, that the, uh, council restored on June second. Um, so, uh, there's, there's, I guess you'd call it an impasse, uh, except you've got, I think, the Board of Ed possibly considering litigation at this point. I can't speak for them. Uh, that hasn't been threatened, uh, at least not to my knowledge, but, um, they're, they're pretty unhappy. They think they're entitled to the money. They think it was restored. And, uh, that's where it sits.
Mr. Posoda, are you aware, I'm assuming that you have a copy of the letter that was sent to Mr. Wilbur from the law firm, the July seventeenth letter, uh, from Carney, Callahan, Bressler, Bennett, and Share stating the Board of Education's position in regard to Mardella High School?
Is it, uh, just forwarded recent, past day or so?
That was July nineteenth was the, the, I mean, excuse me, July seventeenth was the date of this letter.
Yes, I, I believe I'm familiar with.
Yeah, it's, um, it's not going to give you, I know you haven't had a whole, a lot of time to review it, but it's only been this past Friday. I just didn't know if you had had that opportunity and what you thought their, of their position.
I don't have a thought on their position. I beg to be familiar with to which we are referring.
Okay.
Sure.
Any more comments?
I guess the question's going to be, where, where do we go to from here, not only as a council, but as a county? Because it appears that everything's at a skew right now.
That, that's a good question. Um, how does the council feel about a response to Mr. Culver's response?
Well, if I can make a suggestion, uh,
Yes, sir.
And, uh, Mr. Posoda, I'll ask you this, because I don't want, I'm not going to put you on the spot here. I'll just ask you the question, you know, is this something you can discuss and maybe can report back to us at the next meeting? Uh, you know, kind of where this stands, because like I said, we're kind of at an impasse here, but, you know, the, uh, you know, the Board of Ed certainly clearly feels that there, you know, the restoration of this money was, quote, legal. The council, you know, it's very clear that this was within our rights to do, and the outside attorney, uh, you know, to give you a chance to digest that as well, since that's pretty recent, but has also ruled that, you know, clearly this is, was done properly, as, as in the full rights of the county council to do. Thus, with that said, and everyone knowing that, is that something you can get back to us on the next meeting to see if this is, quote, clarified on the, uh, executive side?
Well, absolutely. Mr. McCain, I will, uh, do what I can to average your, uh, concerns and, and get back to you with, again, clear, concise direction.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Mr. Cannon?
The only other question I have, Mr. Posoda, is are, are you aware of the, the budget that was posted online and the differences, uh, from what was posted online as the adopted budget and what the council's considers its position as the actual adopted budget?
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure, figure all that out.
Okay.
I might, I might just kind of run through the three items for the Board of Ed to, to maybe put up another possible twist on it. The, um, funding for the West Side Intermediate Schools, two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Council restored it. That could easily be taken from general funds or contingency. Um, I don't know why that's a big problem. Uh, I understand there's concern about budget matters because of COVID and et cetera, but that is not a huge sum. The amount for Beaver Run, which is an ongoing project, that was in the budget for seven million of new bond money, again, I don't know what the argument is on that. It's going on. Uh, that was in Mr. Culver's initial CIP that he turned in in December, but then he, then he changed it in the one he submitted in April.
Right.
To, to me, that's, again, comes in almost to the no, no-brainer. Uh, the only real issue is, I think, Mardella, which is two and a half million. Uh, it is a good hunk of money. Um, and, um, at, at times, uh, I'm speaking now of the, um, hearing that Mr. Culver conducted on his CIP back in March. Uh, Mr. Strasberg said at that time they reconsider things in July. Um, I mean, I, that, that's really, I think, the, the elephant in the room is Mardella. The other two, I, I don't see why there would be any objection to going ahead with them, because, uh, Beaver Run, you almost have to do, it's going on. And the other, the roof replacement is essentially, in terms of our budget, peanuts. For what it's worth, that's my view.
Ms. Hackley?
So I've, I've looked at some other counties and how they finance their, their public school system and capital projects, and counties who have the same form of government that we do with the county executive. And they have pretty, they have pretty extensive legislation over their public school system. And so I'm wondering if we need to follow what those counties have already set forth, so we don't have this problem moving forward. I mean, now it's hindsight's twenty twenty, but it, it seems there have been other counties that have run into this issue, and they have pretty detailed legislation on how they deal with it.
I think that problem is, they've been doing it for years. We just started, how long we have a county exec?
Since two thousand and six.
And you got to look at our charter. Our charter is typically designed for a county council. And we're still trying to get things in there for the county exec. So our charter doesn't really give good direction as to what the county exec can and cannot do, and what could be imposed against him if he doesn't do what's in the charter. So that's our problem. It's not that what they're doing is good, it probably is, but we can't get to that point until we can get some, I say, clear, clarity on what the county exec can and cannot do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any more discussion? Ms. Harlan, do you have anything on this?
Um, I'd just like to remind council that, um, there, other than the Board of Education funding, there were some other, um, concerns that we had about the budget that was posted online. Um, the county executive did provide a response to the state's attorney salaries.
Right.
Um, it's my understanding that some of the attorneys had actually left the state's attorney's office, and they were able to bring on new staff at a lower salary, which then created a salary saving. So that's why you see the shift in the salary amounts there. Um, we also addressed the issue as far as the one hundred and sixty-three thousand and some dollars, um, in the county executive's fund, um, just being a one-line item reduction as opposed to the individual, uh, specific cuts that council had made. Um, they did make that correction to the online budget. However, they also submitted a memo stating that they were reallocating that funding. Um, so as soon as that cut was made, they shifted some money around, um, which they can certainly do that. Um, they are supposed to provide notice to council. Um, the notice is supposed to be, um, fifteen days in advance of that transfer, um, unless it's an emergency. And if it's an emergency, within five days after. Um, so in addition to the Board of Ed concerns, I just wanted to bring those to council's attention as well.
And in reference to some of these changes by the Executive's Office, doesn't, um, that require council approval?
Um, the notification does not require council approval. It's just notification to council.
Just a timeline. Okay. Anything else on that?
That's all I got.
Counsel, any more comments?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Posoda.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, how's the council feel about responding to that letter or just waiting for Mr. Posoda to come back?
Let's wait for Posoda. Letters are getting crazy.
Okay.
We don't really have much that we can, we can add. I don't think we can add much more to what we already originally sent. It's going to be important, though, that, um, I, I would suggest Mrs. Hurley, uh, Mr. Taylor, uh, meet with, uh, Mr. Posoda and try to get this ironed out. The chief financial officer position also is something that we, I didn't want to
Which is something that hasn't been approved.
That was something else that also needs to be clarified, I think. But I'd like to see that going forwards. Mr. Taylor's done a lot of great work in evaluating this, and so has Mrs. Hurley. I'd like to see some benefit from that, uh, trying to meet, meet the executive branch halfway through Mr. Posoda.
Yeah, and another, another matter that's kind of hanging fire right now, too, is the Board of Ed, uh, and their position vis a vis the county and what they may or may not do.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Which, you know, we don't know at this point. But they've asked for a response, I think, from Mr. Wilbur. I, if there has been one, I haven't seen it.
I've seen a lot of strange letters come across our table, but that was probably one of the strangest. It was unbelievable.
So, right, maybe we can hold off on some of those letters to the Board of Ed?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it's getting us nowhere. So, um, if you would, just kind of hold back from responding.
Well, let's hope that Mr. Posoda will be allowed to meet with staff.
That would be nice, so that we can get some results.
Hope we'll get there.
Ms. Hurley and Mr. Taylor, thank you for working on that and, uh, with Mr. Posoda. All right, next on the agenda to discuss legislation regarding the employment status of certain county employees, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, this is, um, what you've been provided, I think, are three pages of what I call a discussion draft of possible legislation. Uh, this is a follow-up on a suggestion that was made by, um, the attorney Timothy Maloney, uh, as to something to be put in place before taking any other action.
Uh, can you pull your microphone a little closer?
As I say, this is something that, uh, Mr. Maloney suggested is, um, an alternative, or actually something to be done in advance of taking any other action. I'm thinking of legal action. Uh, and regarding the issues we have with the, um, executive branch on, uh, certain, um, department heads and, and other personnel, uh, for which confirmation by the council was required. Um, and what we've attempted to do, using kind of some general suggestions that he made to me, and then I fleshed out, uh, as potential, um, to me, and then I fleshed out as potential ordinance language, and that he's reviewed and I've reviewed again based on his further comments, and that's what you have in the book to look at. I can, I can go through it, but it's an attempt to try to cover all the bases with regard to this group of county personnel, in terms of when they can act, when they have to stop acting after they've, their term of office has ended, or they've been discharged. And in addition to that, the state code provides that the legislative body of a county, meaning this council, can pass legislation imposing penalties, including, excuse me, including removal from office if the local law, meaning this, this potential legislation, is violated. It provides for a removal procedure, and it specifies in the particular parts of the, of the new ordinance language which violations could be subject to removal. So, it covers that base as well. And in addition, and this was something Mr. Maloney suggested, it provides for misdemeanor penalty in certain cases as well. So, that's, that's everything. I will certainly concede if anybody wants to make the point that it's a rather strong ordinance, but, you know, it seems to me that the council's general impression was that strong, strong measures are needed.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, you know, the, the background for it.
Well, that, I mean, it's ironic you use that word, strong, because I guess that was my reaction when I, when I read this. I was like, well, just to be frank, I was like, wow. I mean, as you just mentioned, you know, we, we, this incorporates things, you know, their conduct can be considered, you know, guilty of misdemeanor, you know, they can be fined and incarcerated, you know, it even, you know, has incarceration in here. I'm like, you know, strong might be a little light in this description. I mean, yeah, I think we need, you know, we certainly need to give some, some thought to that because unfortunately, you know, you could have an individual that could be caught in the middle. And then this is talked about taking their, you know, they can be liable for their, their pay, they can be incarcerated, they can be fined, I mean, you know, there's no question it's heavy-handed, I mean, but it may be a little too much.
Well, I would point out that it's particularly in the, in the very start of it, the provision that I've labeled XX hyphen one, right at the start of the first page, it does have three subparts, and it is intended to make clear in the particular situations that are addressed in those subparts, when the person has to stop acting. It removes this notion of de facto authority, which again was Mr. Maloney's suggestion. Let's get that off the table and provide that that just doesn't apply.
Yeah, and I'm pretty comfortable with your XX one.
So, but, but I mean, that's.
It's the other.
It's, well, but I mean, if somebody continues knowing, I mean, bear in mind now, we're only talking about certain people, we're only talking about people who have to be, personnel who have to be confirmed by the council. And they pretty well know the story going in, and if they don't, they can certainly find out by looking at the code. So, it's not like we're talking about all county employees by any means. We're probably at the most talking about somewhere between a dozen and two dozen people right now, tops. So.
I mean, what's the point of, I mean, what's your point there?
Well, the, the point is for the, for that group of people to be very clear about when they have to stop acting and when they're authorized to act.
But the language is strong, whether, it's a matter of talking about one or 100.
Well, I mean.
Well, Mr. Taylor, is the language that's in here, I was under the impression that the language in here is, is nothing that we've created, it's just simply what's already been allowed us through the, the Express Powers Act. Is that not correct, or any other state?
Well, it is, it is new in the terms of these, these penalties, the removal from office and the misdemeanor. That's new. We don't have that in the code right now. The state, the state enabling legislation, the Express Powers Act, provides that a legislative body can do that, can put that in the local laws, and that's what we're, what we're intending to do with this, or what is, this is intended to do, subject to council approval.
Good. Yeah, Mr. Hastings got a comment?
I was just asking, is this based off of any other, what's drafted here, is this, do any other counties did you know of having?
None that I know of.
And the penalties, that, were that, is that, that didn't come out of the air, right, or that's just?
That was Mr. Maloney's suggestion, and I've kind of gone with it, stayed with it, yeah.
Ms. Ackley.
Just to clarify, Mr. Taylor, this, this is for the actual employee, this is not for the county executive? So, it's not the county executive getting the fine?
It could apply, I think, to the county executive, yes. It says officials, the, I'm talking now of the state enabling legislation. It could, it could be applied under appropriate circumstances, of course, to the county executive.
Because I, you, what Mr. McCain said, that there could be an employee just kind of caught in the middle, and for some reason they're still acting because of a fiduciary responsibility. I mean, I'm just thinking like hypothetically, not something that we currently have, but if there's fiduciary responsibility with these different professions, that you can't just stop.
Well, that, and that's what A, B, and C of that first section are intended to do. In other words, we have this situation of the department heads that have to be reappointed every four years.
Mm-hmm.
And it goes on, and paraphrasing the charter, not quoting it exactly, that there's six months after the election of the county executive when he or she has to appoint or reappoint the, the department heads, the director of administration, the assistant director, I think that's all. And there's a six-month period. Now, the people who are in, in office at the time of the election, sure, and it's provided in here, they can continue to serve until their successor, or they, in the case of reappointment, are appointed again by the county executive, and then for another 30 days after that. But I mean, it's, it seems like to me there needs to be some finite end to things, and that's what that does. And it makes it very clear that, you know, after that 30 days runs and then after the six months, so that would be essentially seven months, you either have to be reappointed or you're out. And that's certainly enough time for the county executive to appoint somebody.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're talking now seven months.
Okay.
So, so that's what I'm saying. In other words, it's, it's intended to not automatically just say, you know, come the election, that's it, you're out.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't do that. It provides for that continued period of time, but then it ends.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Any more comments? Mr. Taylor, your legislation that you're working on with Mr. Maloney, this is basically a deterrent?
It can be looked at that way. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, and it clarifies things. I mean, right now, we have this situation where there's a dispute about somebody staying on and serving in a de facto basis.
Right.
And, you know, I won't get into the who's right or who's wrong on that, but this ends that discussion of who's wrong, who's right. It says essentially, we're not going to use that doctrine here.
And this is the teeth that had been discussed at many previous meetings that the council needs?
Yeah, I think that's true.
As far as the charter.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't discuss the penalties and the removal, except very recently. I think we discussed the removal once. But the, the whole idea of ending somebody's period of service and not just going on, on and on and on until the county executive gets around to reappointing someone who's confirmed by the council.
Well, but I just think, I think for us as a council, what we need to give consideration to, I mean, we need something with teeth, which just starts out in that direction, but then it morphs into some serious, serious penalties. I mean, you know, the fact that, let me get very clear, we have that authority, authority to cease and desist, that in itself, I mean, you can't do it. So, that's a legal, if legally they're giving us a cease and desist order, then they have to cease and vacate. I mean, they have to do that, it's legal, and we're expressing that. But then to take it on beyond, beyond that, where, say, what's new is the fact we're introducing here, you know, incarceration and, and, you know, fines and, and they're liable for their pay and so forth, and getting back to Ms. Ackley's point, you know, right, I mean, some like, they, they could be solely trying just to simply do their job they were told to do or given to do. So, so cease and desist in itself is, is, is significant.
Mr. Holloway?
Bill, I agree with what you said there.
Good, thank you.
And then, yeah. Mark that, write that down, Laura. I guess my, I guess an example of this would be is we do not approve someone, okay? They go back to their office and the county executive says, okay, you've not been approved, but you're not leaving. You're going to get paid, you got a job. So, who's the guilty party in that, in that point? Is it the person that stays and signs and receives a paycheck and goes to the bank and cashes it? Or the person that directs them to stay who hired them in the first place? See, that's, I think that's where you get into the weeds on all this thing.
But this isn't, I can't say this is necessarily clear answering your question. I mean, it's a good question, but this isn't, or we need to incorporate that in here somehow.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know.
Because you're directing the point where the weight should be on the person who's directing this.
Right, right.
Where this doesn't necessarily, my interpretation, Mr. Taylor, you know, this doesn't address the individual, I mean, because if you work for somebody, you're following direction, right?
Yeah, but in this, in this point, Bill, some of the employees work at the will of the executive and the legislative branch both, and there is a willful disregard for what the council has suggested, has, has stated, and so I think they are equally culpable. I, I recognize your concerns that it's a little harsh, but I think it's just like any laws, you know, you state what could be the harshest and the most, you know, the most egregious offense and punishment. It doesn't necessarily mean that's the route that anyone's going to take. And Mr. Taylor, no matter how, how much teeth we put in this, isn't this still going to be subject to the judiciary somewhere along the line when that individual says, no, I don't care what you're, right now, it's, I don't care what the charter says, and then they move forward one step further, they say, I don't care what, what this, it's, I'm assuming it's part of the code, is that right?
The, the misdemeanor part is obviously subject to court. I mean.
Right, but that's what I'm getting at, though. How much teeth can we actually put into this because we're just laying another gauntlet down, but not necessarily, I don't see where that enforcement's going to come, where we have the authority to bring the sheriff in.
Well, we have the right, though, to specify the crime or the misdemeanor, and, and then the charge would be in court.
It would have, still have to be adjudicated, right?
Yeah, now, now, I'm going to distinguish, though, between that and the removal. And the removal is really, hopefully, designed to avoid having to go to court. And the removal has been structured, and again, as with discussions with Mr. Maloney, as basically an administrative remedy that's administered by the council.
How would we, how would we obtain, how would we make the removal happen?
Right. Well, it, it provides for a hearing.
Excuse me?
It provides, provides for a hearing with the council, there are some due process rights, and then if the council decides on removal and the person continues, then it becomes a misdemeanor. So, it winds up that way.
Who makes the charges?
Well, we would. I mean, you know, the charges can be referred by anyone. They're criminal, criminal charges.
So, Mr. Taylor, I have a question.
We wouldn't try the case, but, you know, that would be done in court.
So, if, say there's a public works director who is in the midst of a project, they've signed up on the plans, and the council does not confirm them, and the executive does not release them to sign off plans to another engineer, so they're stuck.
Well, I, I have actually provided in there that somebody can continue on, on a selected basis for, just for that.
Because that would be the executive then.
If there would be a project where, where someone had so much, let's call it institutional knowledge, that if he or she walked out, it would be very difficult for someone to replace them. I, I mean, I'll give you a good example right now, I'll give you a good example. As far as I know, the Bayland Aviation case is still set for litigation in court this fall. Now, Mr. Wilber has been, has been the council, the county's attorney on that, and I don't know what all he's done, but from my experience, he's probably done some depositions, some discovery, has a file on it. And for somebody else to come in a week or so before that case goes to litigation, he or she would have to essentially duplicate, they'd certainly have to read everything, and they would probably have to research things. So, you know, just for the standpoint of practicality and money, to avoid having to pay someone to get up to speed just to go into court when Mr. Wilber's already up to speed, that that could be an exclusion. So, that's, that's built into this as well.
Well, in reference to Ms. Ackley, and I, I think, Mr. McCain and Mr. Holloway's comments about these employees getting caught in the middle of this, and Mr. Cannon stated that the employees work at the discretion of the county executive through confirmation of the council. If these employees have not been confirmed and they continue to work, at some point they need to take ownership and realize they're in violation of the charter themselves.
Yeah, that's fiduciary.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it seems to me that it's, it's very clear, it would be in the code.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if the, if the human resources is doing its job, it would point this out to them, even though they might not be reading everything that's in the code all the time.
So, do you get into a situation there of paying these, whoever writes the paycheck is misappropriation of funding?
I do, yeah, it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point. Any more comments? Ms. Harley? Mr. Taylor, where do we go from here? Because I know you mentioned something to me about getting it ready for the next meeting, August 4th.
If council's comfortable with the proposed language, we can put it in legislative bill form.
That's fine.
You're okay with it? Mr. Taylor, you have any comment on that?
The only thing I would say, I mean, if there are people, if there's anyone who's concerned about language, they think incarceration's too hard, I mean, if people want to email, probably Laura would be the best bet, she can be the, the central, but I mean.
I'd like to see that tone down.
I don't, my own feeling is, on drafting legislation, I don't generally like to make changes just because one person wants it. I mean, it's a council matter.
Sure.
And obviously, if four people don't want it, then it seems to me, then it becomes obvious. But that's why I would suggest if people have strong feelings.
Can I clarify that a little bit?
Sure.
If one person wants it and the rest of the council has no opposition to it?
Well, that's.
You see what I'm saying? I mean, it's like we were talking earlier about the grant, I mean, we really never had a whole lot to say about it, but Bill wanted to see something change, and we didn't have a problem with that, is what I'm saying.
But the only problem is then, how do you really know? I mean, the, the best way to do it is to speak up.
Right.
And if, you know, there's not support for a change, then I don't, if there's support for it, then do it, you know?
I think what Mr. Taylor's really saying here, which is a good point, is keep it in the same form that it is, bring it to, forward to the council, but if there's council members that really have a concern, do the council a favor and email the other members with what those are, so that we can think through that process before we get to the table in two weeks.
Right.
That would be a big help.
Well, I'll just say right now, I won't email you, because I'm telling you now, I tell you, I think it's too strong.
Email me, Bill, I got a really short memory, okay?
Right. Thank you, Mr. McCain.
You can email individuals, you can't do a, a group email.
Individuals, okay.
That's why I say, just send them to Laura, and then, you know, Laura and I talk fairly frequently.
Any one email?
I would like to see this worked out before we come back, if, if it's expected to be introduced, August, August 4th. I don't want us to go back and forth like we're doing right now, so it'd be nice to have this already finalized before the introduction.
Can I just ask for clarification, Mr. Taylor, one section? It talks about, in letter B, it's XX dash one, letter B, it talks about, you know, if you are discharged from a position for which confirmation by the county council is required, they no longer have the de facto power or the authority to continue to serve in that position. Then it continues to say that they may not exercise the authority of such a position either generally or in the supervision or management of a department or agency of the executive branch that is assigned or attributed to that position by the charter, except by approval of the council by resolution. Can you explain exactly what that means?
Yeah, this, this goes to when somebody is discharged, not, not when their term of office ends. Yeah, this goes to when somebody is discharged, not when their term of office ends under the six months after the election appointment provision. That's addressed in another subpart. This is where somebody is discharged. I mean, either by the executive, he can discharge people, certain department heads, and the council can, in the case of the county attorney. So it really is to address that particular situation.
So if I'm understanding incorrectly, they would not be able to serve in another county position if they're discharged and not confirmed by council?
Well, they would not be able to serve in a position where the, it's subject to confirmation by council, trying to make, shorten it maybe as to what that's driving at. Yes, they could serve in another position.
Yeah, would they be removed essentially from a position of confirmation to a, just a general?
Yeah, and part of the language of this section is to try to address a situation where somebody is operating essentially as a department head, but hasn't been confirmed as a department head. In other words, that can occur. Whether it is occurring or has occurred or not, I don't know, but it certainly could occur, and it's written to address that as well.
Right, we get that, but to Ms. Hurley's point, I think what you're trying to make clear, Ms. Hurley, is that, you know, you're interpreting that as, but they could be nominated for something else.
Exactly.
But they might very well be, they might, they might not be nominated by this council because we may not think they're qualified for that job, but they might be qualified for something else.
Right.
You know.
Should it be, should something be in there about them moving to another position that's open instead of creating a position?
I don't, I'm just reading this, I think it pertains entirely to the position from which they've been discharged. Now, if they've, if they're acting, continue to act in a capacity that is really that position, I am having a hard time making myself clearer. In other words, they've been discharged, haven't been reconfirmed to the position, but nevertheless are administratively acting as if they were in that position. That's what that's aimed at. It's not aimed at, well, can they take some other position? It doesn't have anything to do with them taking another position.
No, you might want to-
Obviously, if they had to be confirmed to the other position, then they'd have to be confirmed.
Well, maybe just discuss that with Ms. Hurley to try to, because obviously, if she's having to ask the question, it might not be as clear as it could be.
Right. No, that's fine, yeah.
Yep. All right. Any more comments? Mr. Hastings?
Not that you want to make it any more restrictive, but there could be a waiting period or something like that to clearly delineate from when, you know, when a stop has occurred, you know, for employment, you know, to then not, to then go into something else, and I think things could get further complicated if you were to say someone should be removed from a position, they are not, we determine they are not serving that position, and then they get pushed off to another and are still receiving funds, are still continuing to be employed, and, you know, it could get further complicated, but I don't have any strong feelings on that.
As long as there's an open position.
Of course, the county's authority as a legislative body would be only to remove them from that initial appointment, or to reject the initial appointment. What may happen after that, Mr. Taylor, I don't think is the county's authority, the council's authority.
Sure.
Now, you're talking about what may happen after that in terms of them working for the county?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, they would be free to work for the county.
Yeah.
If they had, if it was a position in which they had to be confirmed, they'd have to be confirmed.
I understand that, but if-
But if it was just another position.
Right, the only position that the council has authority over is a position where we have to confirm it, and that we rejected that confirmation.
Yeah.
Josh has a really good idea, as far as, oh, you have to wait 90 days before you can go in any other area, but I don't think we have that overreach, that would be a bit of an overreach on the part of the legislative branch.
Seems to me, yeah, it seems to me.
Could be, I mean, I thought it was a good idea, it may not work.
All right, any more comments? All right, if you have any comments after this, please submit them to Ms. Hurley, so we can try to get this worked out ahead of time. Moving on, Mr. Hastings contacted me about a letter of support for Shore Up. Mr. Hastings?
Oh, yeah, it's a, I serve on the board of Shore Up, and they reached out late last week for, after we'd already posted the agenda, but wanted to make sure that they could, see if we could get, support them for a grant on Friday for the role Maryland Council. It's about $50,000, but this is going to go to, to then replace a, one of their meal trucks. So they have a current meal truck, it's aging, and this goes to, this goes out to the elderly population and others, so.
All right, good with it. Any comments?
Good.
All right, everybody good with it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you.
Did a motion? Thank you, everyone.
That was really quick.
Finally.